Session meeting, February 22, 2022 today. Sounds like somebody's lucky day.
Second birthday today.
See? Well, happy birthday to Dad. Yes. Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order, of course, and we're gonna stand for the Pledge Allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, limited, and just for all.
You may be seated, everyone. Okay, we have some items for discussion today. We're gonna do some strategic planning. I'm gonna ask Mr. Jent if he would at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning to everyone. We've got, we've really got three items. I'm gonna add a fourth one. We're gonna do a presentation in a moment on Neola. We're gonna talk about our broadband services. There'd been, Board Member Ingersoll had requested to talk about norms, maybe wanna postpone that, but I'll leave that up to you all. And then I wanna mention about the referendum and getting ready for that at the very end. So, right now, I'd like to invite Barbara up and to give us a presentation on the Neola. We briefly at last month's meeting, attorney, oh, by the way, Ms. Richardson notified me just a few minutes ago that she'll be unable to attend this morning. And so, we, we talked last time and Molly talked about the Neola and had presented some, some basic information on that. And it really talks about our policy and aligning our policies through the latest legislation, whatever that is that will come down. And so, I'll ask Barbara to come forward and make the presentation and you might have somebody with you too, correct?
Yes, Mr. Jent.
Okay.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Board Members, and Superintendent Jent, good morning. I have with me this morning Mr. Tom Young from Neola, and I'd like to spend a moment introducing him to you, and he will walk us through a PowerPoint presentation he has on what Neola is all about. Mr. Young is a graduate of the University of Miami School of Law, and he is a member of the Florida Bar. He has specialized in the field of public sector labor and employment law, and has been employed in a wide variety of positions in the public sector, representing both labor and management. Mr. Young serves as a mediator, arbitrator, and special magistrate dealing with labor contract and collective bargaining issues in Florida public sector. Mr. Young has considerable experience involving public education in the state of Florida. He served as Director of Legislative and Employee Relations and Special Labor Council for the Miami-Dade County Public Schools, General Counsel for the Florida Teachers Union, FEA United, and was employed by the Charlotte County School Board as Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources and Employee Relations. Unique in his position is that Mr. Young was also elected to the School Board of Leon County, and he was twice elected as Chairman of the Board. Since 2005, Mr. Young has served as a consultant for Neola with Florida school districts to bring their school board policies into compliance with federal and state law and Florida DOE rules and regulations. It's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Tom Young.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. Thank you, Barbara. Thank you for the opportunity to be with you this morning. I represent Neola. It is a company whose sole responsibility is to review and revise school district policies to bring them into compliance with federal and state law, federal Department of, Office of Education and State Department of Education rules and regulations, and applicable case law that is ever-changing, especially in the areas of discrimination, individual rights. We represent over 1,600 districts in seven states. There are thirty, more than thirty clients in Florida where we've been for twenty years. The first client we represented in Florida was Brevard. On this coast, we also represent Indian River and Martin County. We represent from Miami-Dade with 350,000 students and X billion dollars of budget to, most recently, Jefferson County that had been taken over by the state because of some financial irregularities, and they have a total of less than 900 students in one school. Franklin County has one school, K-12, with about 1,000 students. I've worked in both of those, all of those districts, from the smallest to the largest, assisting them in bringing their policies into compliance with federal and state law. As big and as small as they are by comparison, I can tell you that most of the issues that we confront in policy review and bringing districts into compliance with state and federal law are the same. No matter how big or how small you are, the legislature intrudes on the way you do business. They tell you how to teach and what to teach, whether you're a small district or a large one. And when they do that, they change the law, and when they change the law, we have to change policies. In Florida, we have a staff of five associates. I will be working with St. Lucy if you choose to work with Neola. I will be accompanied by either Frankie St. James or Annette Martenson, both of whom were line administrators. Annette in Volusia County where she was the Assistant Superintendent of one of the five districts with, I believe there were 26,000 students in her district and thirteen schools. She understands school operation from the bottom to the top, having been a teacher, principal, and administrator. Frankie St. James from Monroe is Deputy Superintendent and did everything the superintendent asked her to. She understands the same, has the same perspective, teacher, assistant principal, principal, administrator, and Deputy Superintendent. Tom Whitmer has been the in-house counsel in the same role that Barbara has for Alachua County and Pinellas County. And Mindy McNichols recently came to work with Neola. She worked with Miami-Dade in-house counsel for approximately ten years, and she brings a wealth of experience as well. All of us understand and have lived with public education in Florida. Let me tell you a little bit about the process. I'm not gonna read the, one of the things I, as a participant in presentations like this, I don't, I didn't enjoy was having the presenter read to us the PowerPoint. I'm gonna assume that you can read it. I think you have a copy of it in front of you. I'm not going to read what it says. I'm gonna tell you a little bit about what it does, what you do, what we do when we talk about these policy process. What we do is we jointly develop, Neola and the district jointly develop a work schedule. And the first thing we do is try to identify an anticipated completion date. We don't set that. You do. The district does. I can tell you that the amount of time that this process will take from beginning to end will be, the record was set by Seminole County, six months from the beginning of time, the first policy that they reviewed to the final adoption process. Miami-Dade took seven months. Some districts have taken more than two years. There is no time limit for this. The time limit is based upon the priority that the district and the school board and the superintendent give to the process. We recognize, all of us, that you have other responsibilities, other priorities, other than policy review. One of the things that we can do is ease your, your steps along the way in this process. It is an immense project. How do you accomplish such an immense project? We will be reviewing your entire policy manual from beginning to end, every policy. We will bring you four hundred, more than 400 policy templates that cover every conceivable subject that a board might want to have a policy for. And we'll talk about how we can match those. How do we do this? This immense project, I'm reminded of the, the adage that, how do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time. That's how you do this process, one bite at a time. If you look at the immensity of it, it overwhelms you. But if you look at assigning the responsibilities, delegating the task of reviewing applicable policies to those which you are concerned with, the ones over which you have supervision, delegate it down to the lowest possible level to start the policy review, and then compare the policies that you deal with to the templates that Neola has, and work the process back up. Merging, taking some of Neola's language, taking all of Neola's templates, rejecting some of yours, taking all of yours, rejecting some of Neola's, that process works its way up through. And all during that process, Neola, myself, if, if St. Lucy decides to work with us, and one other, two of us always, will be present, working with staff when staff has, is prepared to make a recommendation concerning your policies and ours. And we'll talk about whether or not your recommendation is consistent with the law as we understand it. We'll tell, we'll tell, we'll tell you whether or not the policy we're talking about, what you don't think you need is required by law or not. We'll tell you whether we, whether we understand, whether you understand, that the APA requires that a policy or rule, and APA uses those words synonymously, can only have one subject. Many districts adopt the Pupil Progression Plan or the Student Code of Conduct, whatever the, whatever the phrase you use for those two, as policies. We suggest to you that those policies are not in compliance with the APA's understanding or determination of what a policy is, because they have multiple, multitude of subjects. So, what we do in Neola is assist you in breaking down those pupil progression plans and student codes of conduct into individual policies. We don't mess with your total package, but we tell you those individual pieces of that package need to come into your policies as a single subject. And then when you adopt your pupil progression plan or your student code of conduct, you need not do it, in our opinion, pursue it to the APA with a one-month advertisement and first and second hearing, get, adopt it as a regular board agenda item, because you've adopted all of the policies which are included in the pupil progression plan and student code of conduct already, using the APA. We want to work with the district's point person. This is a really important person in the process, and we ask, recommend the superintendent designate one person as the point person with whom we initially communicate, the liaison, if you will. I was the liaison in Charlotte County when the, when Neola worked with Charlotte County. I understand the role of a liaison representing the superintendent with Neola and representing Neola with the staff, coordinating schedules and keeping track of what goes on. We spread the work out, assign the ownership. The point person maintains a list of policies assigned and knows where the project is at all times. We'll explain the templates. The staff compares the current policies. The staff discusses and prepares recommendations. The, the, Neola will provide training for staff regarding Board Docs platform. That's the platform we use to revise your current policies and prepare the recommendations for the school board. We have technical staff, IT people who are available at a, on a phone call the same day if you have an issue or problem on how to deal with it. When several sections are complete, by the way, the sections we have are, the first section is bylaws. Many boards do not have a specific section called bylaws, and if they have a bylaws section, it is usually not very expansive. But our first section is bylaws, which talk about how the board operates. Then we have administration, program and curriculum, instructional staff, support staff, students, finance, property, operations and food service, and community relations. There are nine separate sections. When we have sections put together, two or three preferably, we will bring them to the board in the form of superintendent's recommendations. You will have those policy recommendations at least two weeks before the time you're being asked to workshop them, so you have a chance to review them and prepare your questions. At the board meeting, we'll discuss the recommendations to the superintendent, why these changes have been made to your current policy, why this new policy is appropriate, and so forth. The policy should reflect the unique nature and character of the district. We don't give you those 400 templates and say, "Adopt these." We say, "This is a place to start. These are in compliance with federal and state law." We warrant that they are. We're the only company in the country that does this service, that warrants, guarantees that our policies are in compliance with federal and state law. And if a policy is challenged, as one recently was in Brevard, we assist the district in defending its policy and making sure that the, the courts understand that the policy is in compliance with the law. This is a collaborative process with Neola providing district staff and the board with advice concerning the law and best practices. We don't tell you what to do. We tell you what the law is, and we make recommendations. After we do the policies and the board adopts them, by the way, that process will require advertisement and the first, almost a month, and then the first and second reading. And then we recommend that the policies be adopted in whole, and your current policies be rescinded in the same motion, so that there is a complete change of policies from A to Z as opposed to piecemeal. Then we're available for discussion about procedures, which is where the rubber hits the road and where many school districts fail to provide access to staff for written procedures, procedures which staff can refer to to understand how to implement the board's policies. We use the same process. We, we have procedures, templates for procedures, so you won't have to reinvent the wheel. We compare your current procedure manuals to Neola templates, and we recommend procedures that, that will be developed by staff who will be asked to implement the policies. A good set of procedures will enable the staff to understand what is expected of them and how expectations are to be achieved, and more importantly to me, will provide for a uniform application as opposed to a selective application of policies and procedures which can eventually or occasionally result in lawsuits involving disparate treatment. A good set of procedures will help you with that process. We also have forms that will be used and connected through this process, through the, through the technology, through the network, forms that can be used, for example, field trips. You have a law, a policy on field trips, you have a procedure, how the policy is implemented, and then you have forms which the parents can fill out. Those are all accessible through this Board Docs process. Again, how long will the project take? It depends totally on the commitment and time and effort of the staff. From six months to two years. The finished product will comply with state and federal law and DOE rules and applicable case law, and will be consistent with your way of work. The entire set of policies and procedures will have been drafted and reviewed by those who are asked to implement them. The policies will be easily accessible and word-searchable on a site maintained by Neola. We look forward to working with you. Questions? I'll go through my, let's see my, I've lost my access to the PowerPoint here. Well, you've got the PowerPoint in front of you. Ah, I hit that by mistake. Okay, the, the last, last one up there is the one which you will, I'm sure, be interested in, and that's the cost. The cost is determined based upon a tier structure, based upon Neola's experience, and is determined by the number of students that you have in your district. Your district falls into the third tier out of five, and the price for the third tier is $57,275, payable in eight quarterly installments. That entitles you to eighty face-to-face hours, drafting hours. By face-to-face, I mean, that's two of us. The fact that two of us are there does not mean that each of us counts for an hour. Both of us count one hour, total one hour. Eight hours of face-to-face drafting, 150 hours of processing. Two associates, first three updates are provided at no charge. Our updates are an extremely important part of this process. We provide updates twice a year. The cost of the update fee is $2,225. The first three are free. Those updates bring to your attention the changes made by the legislature that affect your policies. The update that came out in September of 2020 required changes in 42 school board policies. The one that came out in September of this year brings about changes in more than 20 school board policies. We're bringing, we're bringing another update to you, to our clients, at the end of this month, that will require changes in additional 18 school board policies. This happens every year. If you, if you ask staff to follow the legislature, to identify every law which is being passed that affects school districts, and to develop language that brings your current policies into compliance with those changes in the law, you would consume a great deal of staff time. This is all we do. We have no other responsibilities other than to keep track of what's happening to you. If, if you wanna know about Neola's service, I encourage you to talk to Indian River to the north or Sarasota. Sarasota's the most recent of ours. Martin County, Brevard, Seminole, to name a few not too far away from you. If you, if you know board members on those school districts, contact them. Ask them about us. Ask them what they think of our service and our product. During the update process, we will be available, the associates will be available for consultation for up to three hours per update, so that we can explain to you what has happened to you and what changes are required. We give special updates and special releases when there are legislative changes or changes required by case law which require action before the next update comes. For example, when the parent bill of rights passed, it needed to be implemented July 1st. Well, on July 1st, we presented once it became law. We presented our districts with a complete list of how those, that huge law affected a considerable number of school board policies, and we recommended changes on those school board policies to bring them into compliance. That is currently going on again, as you know. If you're following it, we are, we are going to experience another legislative session, I'll use my word, I'm not asking if you agree or disagree, it's just my, my perception, where they are meddling again with the delivery of public education by school districts to Now, questions? Board members, Mr. Superintendent?
Real quick, no disrespect at all, sir, you are a consulting firm. I really, I don't even know what is the acronym stand for. I doesn't see it, N-E-O-L-A. What does it stand for, sir?
It stands for Northeast Ohio Learning Associates, which is what the organization was 25 years ago. We are a company that provides a service, we're not a consultant, we're, we're a company that provides services to school districts to review and revise their policies.
Oh, I see that. You explain that very well, and I, I'm sure you have a great background, and I could tell from the district you serve already, but I gotta be honest with you, speaking for myself, because I always have to, I have over 50 years of edu, people that have been on my board here that I work with every day. He looks a lot younger than he really is. He has a lot of knowledge. I have the Tom Brady of superintendents in Florida as our superintendent. I got my obvious choice coming in. We have a great staff. We have a great rating, we're like number six in graduations. We have Florida School Board, FSBA, which I get updates almost every other day on. And to have someone like you come in would be kinda redundant for me, and I don't really say, I'm sure you could be of great use to other school districts, but I, I just don't think it would be good for us, or, so I would not be, I appreciate what you're saying, and again, no disrespect, but we got a lot of, lot of experience here, and we've got, got our own attorneys, I've got other attorneys that I can pick up and call, and we, we stay right together. Then, most important thing with school boards is, anyone on these jobs is to have presence of mind, and when somebody's addressing us or we have to make a decision, I can't make a call and ask about, I already have to know about it. And like I say, thank God, I've got, you know, a lot of experience here to work with. But I'm sure you guys are great, but I don't think it's for us. Again, I'm speaking for myself. I don't know if you guys anything different, but thank you for coming, though.
Yes, Ms. Holly.
Actually, at, at my request, because I've worked with him for many, many years through FSBA and know the quality of his work, Neola's work with multiple school districts throughout the, the US, and what he said earlier really struck home. We are requiring of this historical knowledge, as you called it, because we do. We have an insurmountable number of folks that know in and out, but it takes a tremendous amount of their day, staff time, to implement these changes that are coming at us so rapidly now, faster now than I think ever, ever before. We have safety and security issues, we have financial issues, we have ESE issues, and every moment that they're having to focus on these policy changes is time away from actually serving the students. So, I, I want to take responsibility for inviting Mr. Young to come here, and it puts a tremendous load on our legal office as well to serve the number of students and staff that we have here. So, I'm appreciative of you being here. I do acknowledge that we have a wealth of knowledge in this district, but given the circumstances of all of the legislative changes, internal changes that come at us at a daily pace, I, I would strongly urge the board to consider moving in this direction. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am. I'd agree with Ms. Holly. I served on the Policy Review Committee. Is it the chairperson's responsibility? It was at one time, because I wouldn't have nominated myself for that one.
I understand that.
The guy that hates to read, ends up having to read policy, and I'm like, "What?" And, and the point was, is that you're supposed to bring so many policies forward on a rotation here, and we just got so behind. And when I was on it, it was like, we were doing stuff, and it made no sense because it was so outdated. So, this keeps us fresh, this keeps us surprised with the ever-changing, you know, Mr. Young said it, with, you know, with the way that the state of Florida's moving and the federal government at the same time, and trying to get dollars in and making sure you have policies in place for everything else. I think it's crucial that we have the capability to stay, I don't want to say, in step or relevant, but we do have to in order to make sure that we receive all the fundings and we make sure that our protocols are in place, that we don't miss any steps for children. So, I know you don't want to hear it, Jack, but sometimes you have to spend a little money to make a lot more money, save money.
I'm still not going to take back what I said. You don't think we have the capabilities?
Well, we have the capabilities, and as a business person, I have the capabilities of doing a lot of things in my business, but if I'm doing it, I'm not making enough money. I need to train other people to do it. But we can't be training the people we got when we have experts out in the field that are doing it for all the other counties, giving somewhat of a template to us, and tweaking it to our own system, whether it's a system of nine or K to twelve students, or it's a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand student system. They tweak it to our mobility and to what we, what our desires are. And that's the great thing about them being a national organization with sixteen-hundred schools, is they have that capability to come down and tweak it to St. Lucie County. So, I think it's a win.
Madam Chair, if I might, I did not hear a question, but I would like to offer an observation. To the gentleman's point, to all the points that were made, districts, small districts, very small districts, do not have an in-house staff council. They have a school board attorney that's hired on an hourly basis. Those small districts love us because, in the long run, we do what we do for less than what they would pay their school board attorney, outhouse counsel, to do on an hourly basis. At the other end of the continuum is Miami-Dade. Now, Miami-Dade has, I think, at least ten in-house school board attorneys, but I believe that if, well, I know, that if you were to ask the school board attorney there whether or not he values the service of Neola, despite the fact that they have ten in-house counsel who would be researching the law, he would say we are an invaluable resource to the district, that we save them money and time. Both are important for a district. As was pointed out, if you have staff that is spending its time trying to determine whether their current policies are in compliance with federal and state law, researching the state law, researching the language, changing the language, bringing it to the board, first and second reading, and so forth, those staff members are not then involved in the education of children. They're involved with policy. As Mr. Ingersoll said, you probably have to beat him with a stick to get him on that committee again. It is not, it is not a pleasurable experience to deal with policy. Policy wonks are not widely recognized, but it's a necessary evil, and it is, again, as I said before, it is all we do. And I encourage you, you're not making the decision today. Obviously, this is a workshop. I encourage you to talk to other districts that use us and see if they think their money was well spent and their time was well spent. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I am, I like what you said in regards to doing our research, because I would not be quick to say yes to this based on thinking the way that Mr. Kelly is thinking, in regards to what we've been doing all this time has worked. And so, I need to know, you know, why are we making this change? We haven't had any problems here. We, you know, our policy committees and so forth have done a good, and our staff has done a good job up to this point, and we haven't had any serious problems. So, I would have to look into it more myself to feel comfortable with spending this type of money for your services.
I would think so.
Yes, sir. Any more questions or comments, board?
Madam Chair, just to, we've researched this as staff, and as you say, we've got a, you know, remarkable staff here, but one of our biggest concerns is the amount of time that we do spend. Brian's over there, just for the school safety piece itself. We're, our biggest fear is that we're going to miss something from the legislation that we'll have in our own policy or in our own handbooks or whatever it would be, that would be contrary to what the state statute is. It is a tremendous amount of time on our staff. We have a legal department of two, and both of them are brand-new in their current new roles as well. Bill spends an extraordinary amount of time, Helen spends an extraordinary amount of time with this. I've seen it in the other districts as well. I think it's a good return on investment, that it's a security, if you will, a security blanket for the district. When you break out the cost and you do it in the eight installments, it's really, it's really very, very small. It would bring probably a sense of peace and security for staff themselves. I'll, like I said, I used the example of Brian with the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas and all of the follow-up with that, and the tremendous amount of time that he has had to spend, even with our charter schools and our own school centers, that has, he's spent probably more time on that than anything else. So, I would encourage the board to research that, to talk to our staff members as well, but it would be something that staff is recommending, and as superintendent, I would recommend that we take a good look at this, and it would be something that I think that would bring value to the school district.
Look at this and talk with our staff and do a little bit more discussing myself. I would not, I would not give the thumbs up at this time, but I do agree that if it is such a burden, as you're telling me that it is, then, and it's something that we can relieve staff to be able to do other things, I would most likely be willing to go with that and what you're saying right now, superintendent, but I just can't jump at it at this point.
Madam Chair, I have a question. What, is there an annual contract or a yearly contract?
No. Once, once you enter into the contract, you may terminate the contract at any time. There is no penalty. You don't have to, you don't have to be with us until the end of the contract year if you don't like our service. However, once it, the, assume for the sake of discussion that the district chooses to work with us, and spreads the payment over two years and decides after we've finished the project, but before they've paid the final payment, you understand that the final payment would still be due. Once-
Three-year contract or one-year contract?
There is not.
That's all I was asking.
And to my knowledge, we have not had a district, there may have been one district in upper Michigan that chose not to continue the contract, but out of the more than sixteen-hundred districts that we have in seven states, I don't recall that there has been one that discontinued our service. In Florida, twenty years, starting in Brevard. In Ohio, since the beginning of the service, probably nineteen sixty, so sixty-five years, but in Florida, more than twenty years. Two thousand, the year two thousand's when we started with Brevard County in Florida. And I personally have worked with thirty districts, more than thirty districts in Florida, reviewing and revising their policies.
Well, with the superintendent's recommendation to use your services, that weighs heavily on my decision, but I would like to speak with some staff members and do a little bit more investigative.
I completely understand that.
Any more questions, board, from Mr. Young? Thank you so much, Ms. Young, for coming. We appreciate your time.
Board members, thank you for your time and for your consideration of this subject. I appreciate your thoughtful questions and comments. I understand where you're coming from, it's not an easy decision to make, but if you decide to work with us, I look forward to working with you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Superintendent?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next, I'm going to bring Terrence O'Leary up. He's going to go through what's called the broadband services. We have an opportunity here, and this is a very, kind of a brief presentation, but I wanted to give you guys kind of an overview of that, and then, and Terrence can answer any questions. Terrence?
Yeah, before we go further, what's going to be the follow-up plan? Are we going to have a, bring this back up in two weeks to vote, or? I just, I just don't want to leave this hanging out there, so, just between Ms. Chairman and Superintendent, if you guys would just, you know, get together and put it on the agenda maybe next time or whenever you feel comfortable.
The follow-up plan would be, and you guys can make your suggestions as well, but I would think the follow-up plan would be giving myself and whoever other board member would like to do a little bit more looking into it, to give us a couple of weeks at least to look into it and kind of think it over if we are in agreement to having the company come as a whole.
Yes, ma'am, I just wanted to make sure so we all-
Yes, sir, thank you for asking.
I appreciate that. Sorry, Mr. Superintendent.
... because we want, if we go into this agreement, we want it to be effective for this legislative session, which ends in a few weeks, because that would be the greatest benefit to our staff, and it encourages the board members to meet with Barbara, with whomever you want to regarding that, and, you know, I've already said, I won't repeat what I've already said, but, you know, I think within a couple of weeks, if Mr. Kelly and whomever, we make it available, and then, you know, make the case, make a recommendation to the board, and you guys can do whichever way you want to go.
I'm just, I would be uncomfortable, you know my stance on this, and I, after listening to you, I even don't want to do it even more, and I'm surprised, sir, at your, you know, your recommendation, not that that's anything wrong with that. That's your recommendation, I can understand you inviting them and talking about it. The first time I heard about it is today, and like I say, I didn't even know what Neola stood for, and it doesn't even tell me anywhere on here what it stands for, so, and I think something like this should be, have a full board anyways, you know? I'm never surprised that you, you always, but I still don't understand, it's a consulting firm, it's not a lot of, a lot of money, but, you know, fifty thousand here and two-hundred-thousand there, like they say, it adds up, you know, but I don't know for that kind of money what we're going to get when we have SSBA, we have all this, but obviously, all the experience that I'm relying on here disagrees with me, but that's okay. But I don't think we should vote on something like that. First time I heard about it, so I-
And a schedule and-
Well, that's what I thought you said, you know, that's what I thought you said.
No, yeah, well, I don't want to, like, leave it until, like, next June or July, let's have an end date so that you guys can call staff members up, talk to them, get something going.
I just, I think this district's running so well, and I'm so happy with the board and our staff and everyone and the way it's going, I just, I don't want to reinvent any wheels or hear opposing views from SSBA or whatever, especially, every district is local, and we have different local things than other people. We followed the law last year like we were supposed to. It was hard, some of the decisions we made, but we did, you know, and that's, was important to me, and I was very, very happy that we did what we did last year with decisions we made.
I would just, again, encourage the board, we'll meet with Barbara. We are significantly behind right now where we are with policy review. It, again, it takes a tremendous amount of time. We could hire two people to do this job, so it takes away from what the other folks are focusing in on, teaching and learning within the classroom. I'm very aware of this program, so when they talked about it, the board did hear about it last, a month ago as well, when Molly talked about it. Molly will endorse it as well, because she's worked directly with it, Barbara will, because they've worked with it. But I want to make sure that, again, that the board members are informed from staff, you know, the recommendation, it will come forward to the board, and the board can go in whatever direction they want to go with it.
Yeah, and Molly's not here today?
No, she couldn't be here.
Yeah, I would also like to talk to her.
She'll be available, you know, everybody's available, and we'll just set the meetings up.
Yeah, her opinion would make a lot of difference to me, too.
Okay.
Right now, I don't-
If I remember correctly, our last time we spoke about having Mr. Young come, Molly said she had some conflict there, so maybe that's why she's not here today? Okay, so, do you remember Molly saying she had a conflict of interest there? So, that's probably why she's not here. But if I'm hearing correctly, and I just need to clarify, are you going to put, you want to put it on the agenda for vote this next board meeting?
Not necessarily the next board meeting. That would be great if it was on for the March first, but I wouldn't want to go any later than the April meeting, so I would like to, we've got two, you know, we've really got this week and next week to talk to the board. My recommendation would be to go forward with it, but I want the board members to thoroughly, whoever wants to, again, not to beat a dead horse, talk to staff members. Ideally, I'd like to bring it forward at the March first meeting, because the legislative session will end, this will bring a sense of relief to our own staff as well, but I want the board to be comfortable with that.
And Ms. Richardson is not here, so, you know, her input is not a part of this as of today, you know, sadly, because I probably need about another week to really look at this and reconsider what if I-
Well, that's the whole reason why we're bringing it forward, because it's different, it's unique, and I wanted to have these discussions with the board, and there will be a sense of urgency for it, and, you know, if we can get it for March first, fine, if not, then we'll bring it back in April, or we could bring it back to the work session to vote on it for a special, you know, in a month from, month from today as well. So, we have options available after the board, you know, thoroughly checks it out.
So, Superintendent, why do we need Neola now when we have not had Neola all of this time? I think I'm hearing what you're saying, I heard what Ms. Holly mentioned.
It's been something that staff has talked to me about over the years. When Molly came on board, we had those conversations as well. Barbara, if you would like to come up and address that as well, and just tell it like it is.
Madam Chair, good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to dispel perhaps a misperception from Mr. Kelly first, if I may, and that is, certainly no one is suggesting that we don't have school board policies and folks who are capable of drafting policies or that we've been out of compliance, but I think as you've seen, Madam Chair, this has been a very dynamic legislative session. Dr. Wild has participated with staff, and as Mr. Gent says, it's extremely burdensome just the unique chore of trying to stay abreast of what's happening with the legislature right now. As Mr. Young said, the most recent update he did for his districts was forty-two individual policies which required changes. What's unique about what Neola provides is, you need not establish or take their templates verbatim. You retain the flexibility in allowing for unique policies for St. Lucie County. So, it's not a suggestion that what we have is not in compliance, but this is an ever-changing environment for districts, and we think that it's a valuable resource, as Mr. Gent has recognized for staff, because despite the fact that we have staff members who are truly experienced and adept at this, for example, Mr. Tomlinson, who's due to retire soon, he has been drafting policy for decades, but it's not his only role, and as he transitions with a new executive director in ESE, that presents unique challenges. So, what we're hopeful to present to the board is an opportunity to ensure compliance, to not expose the district to any liability for being out of compliance, because this is a very rapidly changing legislature, and we won't- And we won't know what the impact is until the legislative session ends, and we know exactly what's passing and what we would need to do. So, Mr. Jen had requested that I do a little bit of research on Neola. Out of sixty-seven districts, thirty districts use it. Mr. Young said, "It's valuable for those small districts that don't have resources." And while we are well-resourced, I can promise you that our resources are being burdened by these unique changes that are, that are happening to all districts now in the state. So, we wanted to present it as an opportunity for the board to learn a little bit about the service. To your point, Mr. Kelly, initially it looks like, like a sticker shock issue, fifty-seven thousand dollars. That's up to two years and can even be expanded to a third year. So, the initial investment is where the cost comes in, but then with the updates that are provided twice a year, that's really just sort of a, a very small commitment of resources for such a unique tool.
So, Attorney, you mentioned Bill Thomason.
Yes, ma'am.
Having had drafted policies, I, I did, who drafts the policies now? I mean, I know, because this isn't, is it the different heads of departments?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. In the past, prior to there being a legal department, that was Mr. Harrell's function as school board attorney. However, where we are now is that each department head is responsible for drafting their policies. And I can tell you, for example, recently, safety and security underwent an audit, and during that audit, it brought forth the need for four different policies to be created. And Mr. Ruther, as chief of our safety and security, had to devote his resources and time to, to drafting. And then it was brought forward to the policy review committee, and those policies will be brought forth to the board. But his, his talents are in safety and security and not poly, policy drafting.
Well, Mr. Thomason, when you used him as an example, I know that he doesn't need to be doing policies, you know, in his field. So, you just won me over just with that, if, you know, with the different heads of departments, they, they need to focus on what they should be doing. So, even though it has worked, I don't want to put that type of burden on them any longer.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Attorney.
Yes, ma'am. Anything else?
You want to know what Mr. Thomason's saying? All these years in education, and I finally leave and they finally change it? Is that not what I'm thinking, Bill?
Because of your example...
Mr. Thomason, can you get up here and tell me what policy review is like? Please, please, I, I, I need someone.
Wait a minute, you have to get that permission from the chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You're taking over my meeting.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. But, but Madam Chairman...
Mr. Thomason, would you please come to the podium?
Learn to follow procedures, man, you know?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent, policy review is a very cumbersome process, and just being able to keep up with changes in the legislature every single year, and then when those laws pass, and we have to go back and really take an in-depth look at the policies that exist, we have to make sure that every single policy that could be affected by that one piece of legislation is also brought forward to policy review and updated. And when we bring it forward to policy review, then all of the minds that are in the room are trying to sit there and go through that policy, match it to the legislation that has just been passed, and accurately ensure that this is a reasonable policy to bring forward that not only satisfies what's in legislation, but it also protects the district. And it's the right thing that we're doing for the children that we serve. There are so many policies just from our division, and exceptional lead in student services, that takes an enormous amount of time. The parent bill of rights that was passed last year probably affects about twenty-some different policies in the district, and we're still trying to get to the level of updating those policies that will align with the parent bill of rights. So, as Mr. Inglesall said, from being there, and Mrs. Hawley currently on the policy review committee, it's not an easy process, it's very, very cumbersome. And this, we looked at Neola, Brian and I looked at it, we actually have brought it to Mr. Jen and Dr. Prince and asked them to please consider taking a look at this. We reached out to other districts, we talked to them about how they're using Neola and how this has aided them in being compliant in their policies. If you, as an outgoing person, a recommendation would be to certainly consider that, but please do your research with other districts because they will share what the value is in this.
Well, I, I think more so for myself, for it, it's not so much other districts as it is what do we think? What do we think we need to do as a district family? And I appreciate you coming up, I'm glad we're still talking it through because you're doing, you guys done, I let you do the footwork, you know? It's like Dr. Prince said at the last meeting when he said, he, he's, he has to do the, he does the footwork to make this vision come to pass, you know, from our superintendent. And that's the way I want to do too. I don't want to have to do the footwork when you guys have already done the footwork, you know? Just hear from you and, and see what, you know, because I didn't realize that each department head had to work on policy. I did not realize that you guys have enough to do. So, if we do need to move forward in that and you're in agreement to that, then I thank y'all and so me.
Thanks.
Mr. Kelly? Go ahead, Mr. Kelly.
Madam Chair, I, I, I understand this young lady.
Ms. Attica.
I can understand why some of the policies, why you would want to, and Mr. Thomason leave does open up the door to reviewing policies. Just fix that, just don't leave, sir, you know? There's nothing good on TV, you're not going to enjoy it. You, you know, just stay here with us, we don't have to hire the guy and, you know?
I think that's in policy with the, with the Florida Legislature, once you're going to drop, you don't have a choice.
I, I just, I just think...
Have to follow the policy.
No, she brought up a great point. She's, she's great. She's one of the people in the machine here, I think, that's, we have such a good staff. But, yeah, policies do change, and ESE, special education is so sensitive, and I, I really admire all the work you've done, and I wish you, you know, you are leaving, but I can understand why we would want to look into those policies. But what this young lady said was, that's what I'm looking for. Why do we need, you know, and, because I, I just think all the experience, we have it all here, but we may need to look into some of those things, so, she's sharp. But, and thanks again for everything that you have done for us, but that's the point that you were making, I need to know more, I need to look into it. Probably should have met with you before we had this, so I would have known what you were trying to bring Debbie Kennedy with you, but I could have met with him, right?
But I think, I think today, even having it today and getting more thoroughly, a more thorough understanding today, as we're getting here with Attorney Barbara and yourself and, you know, others, I mean, Terrence, I would, Terrence, you have to do that too? Oh, no.
If I could get, with the board's permission and your permission, have Helen come up too, because she's, she spends a lot of time.
I was just thinking about that.
And it's just not the, it's not the department chairs either, it's their entire, many of their staff that they spend hours going on, so, Dr. Wild.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, board members, Superintendent Jen. I concur with everybody that has spoken so far. We have looked into Neola. We have, actually, Bill and I have been talking about this for over a year now, at, at thinking that this would be an important move for us. The speed that legislation is coming forth these days is just so fast, it's so much to keep up with. And we will still continue to follow that because we're looking ahead to make sure that we are making the changes in practices to get staff trained and make sure that when something changes, our procedures and practices, that we are spending our time training on that and making sure that our actions are in compliance. So, if we can then rely on a group of experts who can then do the writing of the actual policies, the policy writing takes time, and I think Bill hit on a very important part. We often do a great job coming forth with a new policy or the main policy change, but we don't necessarily always catch looking through every single policy that might even reference what needed to be changed, because sometimes it does affect multiple policies at once. So, I am very much in support of this. I know it'll be a lot of work doing the initial conversion. Another benefit is, all of the numbers, board policy numbers change, and then all thirty-seven Florida districts that use Neola are referring to the same policy number when we're talking about a policy. So, that really helps with communication. If we're talking to other districts, we're trying to look for other districts to see how they're putting it into action, we don't have to do a search of terms, we can look for board policy numbers. So, multiple benefits, I am in favor of this change. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dr. Wild.
Madam Chair, one, if you don't mind, another comment.
Mr. Inglesall, you may speak.
Thank you so much. I'm not sure if you realize how the meetings go, too, is each individual department writes their policy, and then we all get together in a room about four times a year, five times a year, for about five hours. And then they tell their policy, and then, you know, security says, "How does it affect me?" You have the athletic director there, you have HR there, you have every person through the district of department heads in the room, making sure that it goes through their thing. That is a lot of department heads for four or five times a year, and, and, and I, this is probably my fault, because I was a school board member at the time, I said, "I'm never doing this again," and I just made Debbie Holly in charge. So, that, if every one of you had an opportunity to sit in that meeting those many times, you'd probably say, "This is a waste of time." I'm like, "I'm not even sure how I ended up in the meeting. I thought, I think I rocked in the wrong room and that's how you ended up." And I'm telling you that you sit there and you're like, "This is a waste of time," but it's not. It's something that has to be done, but could be done in an efficient way, rather than having your top head sitting in rooms for four to five hours, four or five times a year, trying to go over policy. It makes no sense. And I even said it then, I was like, "There's got to be a better way to do this," and they're like, "Well, how do you get on the same page?" It, it's crazy.
Well, based on what I've heard so far, you, you've won me over. You've won me over because I, I know that we have brilliant minds sitting here, and I, and I would, I wouldn't want you to spend those brilliant minds trying to figure out policy. So, you've done it, you've done a fantastic job. I don't believe we need Neola because of not getting the job done ourselves, but your mind should be on what you are to do to continue to keep this district where you've kept it at. So, I've done my research personally. Mr. Kelly?
One last time, I, if the presentation that the gentleman gave had given points like this young lady did, I would understand why we, we probably need that, okay? And to your point, all the years that I've been on the city council and all these other boards, I am very, very leery of consultants or anybody that comes in, because many times they're told, "I want you to study this and give us an idea, but I want you to lean this way." Yes, they are. And I've seen so much wasted money and wasted time on things that we already knew, you know? And, and just, and not just on government boards, but on boards like the Boys and Girls Club, or, or, just wasted money that we, we did. So, I'm, I'm really leery, but when I hear the point, if I hear the real reasons why, I, then my mind begins to change. So, I appreciate that. And, and of course, Dr. Wild, whatever she says, I'm going to go along with anyways. That's a joke. But, and I appreciate hearing why we really need it, not all about the board or where they're from or all their, you know, I want to, I want to know...
I think, me and you think a lot alike on that, because that is, that was the same thing.
You're on the same page, so, yeah. We just wanted to know more, okay?
Yeah, I think, I think it's safe to put it on the agenda.
All right. Now, we'll move forward?
Yes, please.
Mr. O'Leary?
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. O'Leary.
Good morning, Madam Chair, board members, Superintendent Jen, colleagues. Today, I'm going to talk to you a little bit of an opportunity, brief opportunity that we have on the education broadband services that we own. When you look at education broadband services, this started almost sixty years ago, and really, it was designed by the FCC, the Federal Commission, Communication Commission, to serve as a mean for educational institutions to deliver educational program to all of our campuses, both K-12 and universities. We currently own two licenses of that education, EBS spectrum, WLX 391 and WLX 392. I want to make sure that we understand that this does not interfere with our WLXTV. We've implemented this back when Jack Roberts was over, our media director, for those that were here then, and he liked the call letters WLX, so we called it WLXTV. These are separate and different, so no changes to our current WLXTV and how we get out the This spectrum is prime at this time, and you see it every day in your commercials. It is for the next generation of mobile operation. So, we started with 2G, "Oh, how to get 2G." 3G, "Oh, you have to get 3G." LTE, "It penetrates buildings, you have to get that." And now, we're at 5G. Most of the mobile operations, T-Mobile, your AT&amp;T's, your Verizon, they need to grab this unused spectrum to offer those types of services. This current spectrum, these two licenses we own, are extremely valuable at this point because they're going to help with that 5G implementation, to the value of around six to eight million dollars, depending upon what different companies are offering. Up until this point, the FCC has permitted us to lease our portion of these spectrums to Verizon, AT&amp;T, and T-Mobile, and we currently have done that. So, ninety-five percent of the school districts or universities in the country have leased these options out because they aren't utilizing them. We have been doing that since 2007. We are in contract with Sprint. We got a yearly commission from Sprint, about two-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand dollars, they would lease that for us, and that would go to the general fund. As you know, Sprint and T-Mobile have merged, and since then, T-Mobile has taken over our two leases, and we're currently in contract with them, and we average yearly about two-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand dollars for those licenses. Well, why two-hundred-and-eighty-six, and now all of a sudden I told you they value at five to eight million dollars, is because those mobile operations are trying to get to the faster speeds at 5G. Since 2007, we no longer were utilizing them. Back when Jack Roberts was here, he was up on the roof with the antennas, and we were sending our TV signals back and forth out to our campuses, and we no longer have to do that. It is at that time, we updated our infrastructure, the fiber infrastructure, which allows us and the work with Ms. Martin and Craig Jerome, to deliver two-hundred-and-fifty-six channels to our school through our fiber backbone. And most universities and most school districts you'll see are in that, uh, uh, infrastructure upgrade or already there, and that is why you see so many of them leased. There's ever, other methodologies that we can use beyond just TV to get our message out there, and Mr. Jerome and Ms. Martin have leveraged those. YouTube, Facebook Live, our own district website, we stream the actual video right from the website. So, it's a combination of all of this communication and leveraging those platforms to get our message out. Therefore, we don't have a need for them. The biggest change came from the FCC, April 2020. They changed the rule nineteen dash sixty-two, and they saw the same thing, all of the universities, all of the K-12 environments, where, since we're not using them, how can I get them out? So, they changed the rule, which allows us now to sell those licenses. So, no longer will we have control over them, we can sell them out to our T-Mobile or any other private business that would like to purchase them. Since 2020, you see a hundred-and-thirty-five current universities and K-12 have already sold theirs. Forty-three were sold in 2020, ninety were in 2020. Forty-three were sold in 2020, ninety were in 2021. So you can see the uptick on those getting sold. Indian River State College has just completed their sale of their spectrum that they had. School districts to the north of us, Indian River County, did not have any spectrums or licenses because, as you recall during that time, they had their own fiber running from school to school, so they never even purchased it. Jack Roberts went ahead and leveraged this. You didn't have to purchase it. The FCC gave it to the districts. So if we have a potential sale, what I would like to do is just walk you through the steps. So once we receive an offer, and we have received an offer, to purchase our license from the, from WCO Spectrum, let me catch up to myself, which is a private investment firm, which invests in EB license, we are required by Section 3B of our current license, lease license we have with T-Mobile, so we'll need to send them written notice to offer T, offer, notice of the offer to T-Mobile. T-Mobile has thirty days to exercise the right of refusal, refusal, sorry, and match the offer and purchase the license itself. If T-Mobile exercises the right of refusal, we'll enter in a contract with T-Mobile, which is the match. If they refuse, we will then move to a contract to WCO. Once those contracts are ready for sale, we'll present them to a school board meeting on your agenda. If that was to go through and you approve of that contract, we then are required jointly with whoever we sell our licenses to, to file an application jointly to the FCC. At that time, it's, takes about four to six months, that's about the timeframe of that. We will then finalize it and have a closing of that sale. So real brief, like I said, that's our presentation about EBS or education broadband services. Any questions, Mr. Jen?
Any questions, Board?
Madam Chair, so what we're asking is for the board, for consensus to move forward. This could be a financial impact, a positive, a very, very positive, of selling these EBC licenses, that we can bring in some revenue, some significant revenue between two and eight million dollars. That, that money goes into the general fund to be spent as needed, and it would be, you know, so we just want to, I'm recommending that we move forward with that and give staff the ability to, to meet with these companies and to start negotiations. And then, and then like Terrence just presented, then anything that would occur would come to the board on a consent agenda item for selling. You guys would be involved in that process. Plus, we would talk to you about that as well before that came forward to let you know where we are. But it's, it's, it would, it would benefit us and, and enhance our district.
Mr. O'Leary, we've never used these spectrums? And how long have you?
We, we used them early in the 2000 when we didn't have the fiber infrastructure in place. And once we put that fiber infrastructure, we're able to deliver a much better service to our schools and to our students. And then we, since then, technology progresses, so things like YouTube came available, Facebook Online, and streaming on the website have become more available. So there's no longer a use for us to keep those licenses. We haven't used them since 2007. We've actually leased them out to Sprint and T-Mobile.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
No questions from the board for Mr. O'Leary? Okay, thank you.
Can I, can I just ask, you know, one of the things we were going to talk about here were procedures, and I've got your, that's your recommendation. Why would something like this, when it moves forward, why would you put this, and again, it's just a procedure thing, because I don't understand sometimes from other boards, the consent agenda we have, I, I agree with it ninety-five percent of the time what's on there. Why would something like this be on a consent agenda, Mr. Jen, instead of brought as a separate item? Not, no, no, just, it's just a procedural question.
It's our policy.
Huh?
That's the policy. That's how we do it. Yeah, we would bring it forward to you. I mean, this would be part that the board, we would have to have board approval in order to, to sell these.
Yeah, but why would it be on the consent agenda instead of being a separate item?
Because it's a consent agenda item.
Okay, and that's determined by things that go on the consent agenda? I'm not, I'm just asking a question.
That's our policy. That's been our protocols since I've been on the, since I've been here for seven years.
And then if you want, you can pull it off and make it separate. You can pull it off of the consent agenda and separate vote.
You're right, yeah, like Troy, like Troy did at the last meeting.
Yeah, just like Mr. Inglesall did at the last meeting, exactly.
Okay, okay. Just, I want to get with it.
Mr. Jen?
Okay, moving along. We, we had talked about, Troy, did you want to say anything?
It's just coming time to just review some of our policies and procedures, and just as board members, we have to monitor ourselves too, and just what, what are we doing, what's going on in our time and our life, and, and how are we treating our staff? And with the new superintendent coming in place, and how are we going to, you know, negotiate things, and how do we communicate things? It's always good to go over it, but it's just best if all of us were here when we went over it rather than just four of us, because we really need to make sure that we're all on the same page, that we go line by line and say, yes, we still agree with this, because we came up with this on our own, us three did, and it's just making sure that the whole team's on the same, 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 same field and we're doing the same thing. Because there's no sense of us saying we're having policies and procedures, and we don't do that, and we go off and, you know. One of the things that, that always got me was, not that we do this, I did it earlier on in life and realized I was not doing it wrong, but when someone emailed us and emailed it to the whole entire board, you know, the chairperson is responsible to email them that, not like Troy, Jack, Donna, Debbie, because the reality of it is, is I'm going to get with Dr. Wild, Dr. Donna's going to go with Ms. Barbara, Jack thinks, oh, that's Dr. Prince, and one. So we got four or five different staff members involved, rather than the chair handling it, talking to the superintendent. And that's the reason why policies and procedures are in place. So it's best if we, I talked too long already, but that's why I would like to wait in the next meeting so that we all can discuss this together.
Mr. Inglesall, I agree with you, especially going to each of the, what we, you know, our procedure, our policies, our norms, and being open to all board members' comments because we may have to change something or adjust something in there, and it's, it's probably time for that. So I would like to ask Mr. Jen if he would definitely put it on our next workshop session so that we can have time to really talk it through, and hopefully Ms. Jen, Ms. Richardson will be available so that we have full board when we do that.
And please look at it ahead of time. Chris willingly photocopied this so that we can look at it, and if we need to make any changes or something like that.
Yes, sir.
Because last meeting or the meeting before, we were supposed to go over procedures for our regular meetings, as far as people bringing signs in and things that, you know, we had discussed before, and also about speakers. I mean, it's, I've seen it, you know, if you get a lot of speakers, I think, and I'm not giving you my opinion, I just want to discuss it. If you have ten speakers, you give them five minutes each or whatever, but if you have thirty speakers and give them three minutes or two minutes or whatever, and it would be up to the chair, I don't know what our procedure is on that, but we need to talk about it. More people get to talk if they get a little bit less time, but where do you want to keep it the same way? I don't know, but we were going to talk about that, weren't we?
Mr. Jen, would you also?
We never got to, we never got to get to that.
Yeah, we, we agreed at the last, when we had that discussion, that we're going to wait until the legislative session is over because there is specific language regarding board meetings and protocols and speakers and time limits and all of that. That's an example of the state legislature kind of as.
You know that whole Neola thing we just talked about?
Yeah, I understand.
That's part of it.
FSBA. FSBA gives me that stuff too, Troy.
So until we, until the legislation's over, and then we can kind of dissect that and then come back, probably in April-ish, to, to, to share that with the board based upon whatever the legislature does.
You know that internal, internal knowledge and experience I talked about, right there?
So Mr. Kelly. Okay? We already have it. Mr. Kelly, you are in agreement to that? You're, you're in agreement to waiting till after legislative?
Sure, of course.
Okay, so we'll move forward.
And then just in regard, a comment that Troy had made regarding the three of us, it was really the four of the board members that were at the master board training that agreed upon the norms that we, we had. This board has agreed on that, so it's just time to go review it.
But we do, but we do need to go over them. It's time to go over them. We have two new board members. We need to, it's just a time for that, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And I think we've finished all.
Last thing, if I could.
Referendum.
Yeah, we're in the, we're in the process now, the initial stages of the renewal of the referendum. That will be on the November ballot. We are, we, I'm going with the board's approval, our consultant, Steve Van Cor, Van Cor and Associates, that served with us the last time, want to enter into a contract with him. They will begin polling the community. We have to look at our language. That's on the ballot. The main difference of the, the ballot language would, by state statute, we will include charter schools now, charter school teachers would be included. And so in the language, when it would say something to the effect that in order to raise the salaries of teachers and educational support, in order to raise the salary of teachers and charter, and pursuant to whatever the state legislation is, charter school teachers, to retain highly qualified teachers, enhance school security, improve mental health services, fund other essential operations, preserve important school programs, shall the St. Louis County School District, and then I'm not sure what the language is, but it's renew, it would be, somehow the language would be to renew this, because it's not an initial one now, it's to, to keep it going. And the big point here would be that for four more years, with all funds reviewed by the Citizens Advisory Committee. I'll be meeting with the Citizens Advisory Committee. I'm going to meet with Chris today to set that meeting up, hopefully within the next couple of weeks. It's time to give them an update as well, but we need to get that, we need to get that train out of the station and start moving forward. So I just need a thumbs up from you guys, and then we're going to, we're going to move. We're good? All right? I got four. Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair, that's it.
Okay.
Oh, oh, boop, boop, boop. These are real simple. Two, just two announcements. Thursday at 8:30, we'll be at the PSL City Council Retreat, just presenting similar to what we did to Fort Pierce last week, presenting just overview of where we are with our, our district, just an update. And then next, next Tuesday, a week from today, March 1st, is the EDC luncheon, and Dr. Prince and I will be presenting at that, and I believe, I've heard from three of you, if they're interested in going, we'll make sure we get the tickets. We can check with you. Chris will check with the other two. And that'll be next week at the EDC, over at the Mid Florida Center. Just wanted to share that with the board.
Thursday, this Thursday, the retreat, I'm probably going to be, just next week, I told the chairman, I, probably most of the week, I'm going to be unavailable for the whole week. I got a medical situation that I won't be, most, I doubt very much I will be at anything from Monday on for most of the week, just so you know.
Okay.
Leaves you open to do whatever you want.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. At this time, the meeting is adjourned.